Chairman, to this meeting of the Oviedo and Scrutiny Committee on Housing. Item one is the minutes of our last meeting. I assume you've all had time to peruse them. Are there any comments or factual errors? Or is it your will that I sign them at a later date? Thank you very much. Item two, apologies for absence. Fiona, do we have any?
I've not had any apologies, so perhaps Council Townsend and... And Council McGowan will join us shortly.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, usually the head of housing operations will be here, but unfortunately he's not able to be here tonight due to a review.
Okay, thank you. Item three, declarations of interest. Any received?
None, Chairman.
Any last minute declarations, things that people remember? Okay, thank you very much. Item four, questions by members of the public. Any received?
None, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we're straight into item five, performance management report for the first quarter. Annalisa.
Thank you. So this is your routine performance report that I'm sure you're all used to seeing. So as the Chairperson said, we're looking at April, May, June, the first quarter of this financial year. The housing service performed well, unfortunately didn't meet three of the targets. So Annex one gives you the detail of the nine performance targets that were measured against, and the covering report gives you additional information about three targets we didn't meet. So the first one was the relet performance. Overall, we had an average of 22 working days. And this committee knows the average is 20. If we broke that down by month, you'll see that we did meet the target in June. And, you know, we did meet the target in May, and we nearly met the target in June. So we're getting much better, and we see that as an improved performance. And I'm pleased to say that I worked out the August monthly statistics last week, and we had an average of 16-day turnaround for the letting new homes. So, all being well, when we get to quarter two, we'll continue to see that improvement. We had a number of issues that impacted performance that we've considered, and a range of actions have been implemented to try and address those issues happening again. So our tenants' estate officers are visiting people who expect a move in the next six months. So getting into the homes early, identifying any potential issues with their home, making sure they replace doors if they've taken them off, make sure the gardens are clean and tidy. The second indicator that we didn't meet the target will come as a surprise to those of you who are used to looking at this performance information. Unfortunately, we didn't hit the rank collection figure. And this was somewhat of an anomaly, really. The teams worked really hard at getting people to pay in advance. And we've also, you'll remember that we credited around 2,510 with a water charge credit onto their accounts. So because of this credit on people's accounts, they amended their direct debit forms or payments. So we haven't quite collected the same amount of money in. But I assure you that with the information in the report, that you can see we've actually got 3,600 tenants who are in credit on their rent account, and that equates to just over £600,000. So bear with us on this figure, and I'm sure that next quarter you'll be back to the normal performance. And the third indicator we didn't meet was the responsive repairs indicator about the tenants believing that their repair had been completed right first time. There's been a slight dip, but I'm pleased to say that this hasn't had an impact on the overall satisfaction with the repair service. So it's something we continue to monitor and work with our contractors with, making sure that we're diagnosing repairs, telephone call appropriately, trying to ensure that operatives have got appropriately equipped vans to deal with the repairs they're going out to. This is an ongoing issue that we are monitoring, but the good news is that it's not had an impact on the overall satisfaction. Moving on to page 21, this is the customer feedback element of the report. We had 19 compliments in quarter one versus 28 complaints. This has been a real dip in the number of complaints the housing services received this year. And this can be attributed to the hard work of the property services and the work this committee's done with property services on responsive repairs and the handworks. So we've got a much closer working relationship with our contractor. We've got a single point of contact for complaints now, and great to focus on the quality of work and looking at the overall customer journey. So in conclusion, I think we've had positive start to the year. We continue to meet key performance information on gas safety, temporary accommodation, and overall satisfaction with responsive repairs. We're continually working on the relet performance, and we've seen a significant reduction in the number of complaints that we've received in the year. I hope this takes any questions.
Thank you very much. Just draw people's attention to item 18 on page 21, and item 19. People are very, very ready to complain, but less likely to compliment. We've had 19 compliments and 28 complaints, which I think is a surprisingly high ratio of compliments. So I think something might be right. Questions, observations, anybody? Chancellor Goodrich.
Chair, I see when it deals with complaints that under paragraph 21, there's been a general lower demand for repairs. Can I ask why? Is it because we thought the homes up to such a good standard that this is going to be a continual situation? Because if so, then the spiral has come to an end, and it should get better from now on.
That would be our hypothesis.
And the other reason, the other thing I wanted to ask is the responsive repairs dipping from 76 to 72.3. Is there any particular overall dissatisfaction, or is it just general?
It's one of those ones that's very difficult. You know, if I had someone from property services here or potentially from my contractor, they would question me as to, well, were those repairs able to be done right first time? So it is about the tenant's perception a lot of the time. But short answer is, it's something we continue to monitor. And I think it's one of those, I don't think we'll ever be 100% on right first time.
And Chair, maybe just to add to that, that even if we performed exactly the same way, the nature of the jobs are variable. Sometimes they're straightforward, sometimes they're very complex, and that can have an impact.
Yeah, sorry, my brain's clicking now. It's also about whether we potentially could go in and fix the repair and solve the problem, but then we might go the next week to improve it. And therefore, the tenant's perception could be that it was fixed first time, or it could be that it's not. So that's where we get those anomalies. But I still think it's an indicator that's been very useful for us. But I use it with the overall satisfaction, and if we're seeing a dip in the overall satisfaction...
Could I come up with a supplementary on that? When we have a tenant who indicates they're not satisfied, do we check whether that's a reasonable dissatisfaction? In other words, do we go back, or do we just log it and say, okay, they're dissatisfied? Or do we go back and find out, well, actually, there's no reason why they should have been dissatisfied, or they had a point?
So I think the straightforward answer is that we log it as a dissatisfaction. But we're able to, through the sophistication of the approach, particularly on responsive repairs, is to map where the dissatisfaction tends to be happening, not for an individual, but overall. Is it on the initial contact? Is it when the contractor goes in to look for any trends? But we aren't able to do that on individual cases. We take it on face value in effect.
Presumably if it's a major dissatisfaction, then you go and have a look at it. But if it's a routine, well, it could have been done that bit better, then you log it. Is that more or less what we're telling you?
Absolutely right.
Right first time's not necessarily an expression of dissatisfaction. So, but we have a company called Voluntas who do surveys, and all that information is presented back to the property services team. I'm aware that our customer service team have been doing a lot more, calling back people to check on any issues. And also, as Damien was saying, when we're monitoring the information, we can also monitor by type of work as well. So we can identify if all of those right first time unsatisfied cases were to do with electrics, then we'd be able to deal with that, whether it's been across the board, as a general.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. At our last meeting, the Wavely scrutiny group observed that there's quite often, quite a bit of time at the start of each repaired job on a void, and then at the end, the handover as well. Some time between the work being finished and keys being handed over, final inspection happening, and then the relet actually happening. And I also raised the question at that meeting about the impact of different property sizes on the time it actually takes to do the work. So I followed up on that last week and had a really good half an hour with the head of service. And I was incredibly impressed with the quality of the analysis that the team's doing to find out the little nooks and crannies that can be investigated for saving for the time, which was the admitted target. You know, last time, they said 20 days is not the finishing point. This is where we've got to now, how do we move down? So I think there's one slight amendment to the display that I would welcome to see. It should be fairly easy, but others might not agree. I'd just like to put it out for consideration. Would it be easy to actually display on metric H2, a bar for each quarter, just showing the amount of time under Wavely's control, the amount of time spent by the contractor? So that when we've got our 21 days, we can see how many days are actually due to Wavely, and how many are due to the contractor? So that we know where to weed, if you like. Because, you know, we've got interfaces with tenants, both outgoing and incoming, and management of the contractor that's within our control, and then the contractor has to do their bit. So that was one thought. The other thought was, in the comments, we're seeing quite a lot of variability month by month in the amount of time it takes to achieve a relet. And yet I don't think that's particularly unreasonable. And I think the team's possibly getting beaten up on a little unreasonably at times. If you have a month when you're dealing with nothing but three-bedroomed houses, you've got gardens and a lot of extra decoration to do, and it's going to take longer. Conversely, 16 days, we might have been doing nothing but one-bedroom flats. So it should, but we don't know that. And that little bit of added granularity might help us be fairer to you when we're considering the data each quarter. So thank you, Chairman.
Well, I'm glad your concerns were dealt with happily by the officers. Can we pick up your idea for discussion later, rather than round the table and force you to give an answer off the top of your head?
I'm happy to answer.
Now, let's take it offline, and if you're happy with that, we'll catch up later. Okay? Any other comments, questions? Okay, so do we have any observations or recommendations about performance that you want to make to the executive? None? Any observations or recommendations about customer feedback performance? None?
Well, we could say we're pleased to see the significant drop in complaints.
Yes, that's okay. Yep. And any areas for the committee for future work plan that you want to change in the IT? We've had one mentioned effectively from you, which is just a slight change in presentation. Anything else?
Just an observation. I know that the council overall is looking at how it can improve its approach to customer service. I do wonder whether Counselor Richard Seaborn's comment about the granularity and the evidence that underpins the approach that housing has taken is a useful comment to feedback to executive. Because I think it's a useful way of looking at how we might address customer service issues elsewhere in the council. A kind of very systematic, detailed, data-driven approach, which I think gives confidence.
And committee members happy to support that? Okay, with those two comments, then, the recommendations on the first page of your agenda, 1, 2, 3. Are we content with them?
Sure.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item six, IT systems in the housing service. I call upon Bill Gates not being available. Annalisa again.
Okay, thank you. So this was a report that we requested last time. I hope it gives you a comprehensive understanding of the range of IT systems we have. Taking into account, we're managing nearly 5,000 homes, 9,000 tenants, 500 leaseholders, 1,500 housing needs applications, and hundreds of inquiries, and, well, not complaints, thankfully. That was reduced. There's a lot of data for us to manage. So really briefly, we have Orchard, our housing management database system, which manages all the information about our homes and our people. It's the system for collecting rent, raising repairs, dealing with relets, service charges, and tenancy management. We have a second system that supports Orchard, which is called Keystone, which is our asset management database. And that system holds the more detailed information about our homes and the elements within that home. So when, what type of boilers in there, when the boiler needs to be replaced, what kind of roof have we got, when the roof needs to be replaced. And that assists us with planning our planned works into the future. And then corporately, we have a system called Civica, which holds all our documents information as well. So inquiries, tenants, letters, standard information about people. We have a number of bespoke housing systems. The idea is that anything that can go on Orchard, we'll put on Orchard, and we'll make a process for that. Unfortunately, it's not the panacea of IT for us. So we have a number of bespoke systems that private sector housing team operate their database through M3 Northgate. Our housing options team have a bespoke access case management database. And our family support team have a bespoke SharePoint case management system. And they're all managed internally by our IT teams. Where possible, we have key interfaces between the systems. So Orchard users are able to access information in Keystone just by doing a right-click button, what's called a hotkey, so they can directly go from one property in Orchard to a property in Keystone and look up information. Information flows back and forth between Orchard and a system called MCM, which is our contractor's database, MIA's that you'll have heard of me talking about before. So that passes information about repair requests, payments, authorizations, property and personal data as well, and that flows backwards and forwards. Any letter that's sent from Orchard is automatically filed in Civica. So we've, you can see, we have got systems in place to try and make processes as straightforward as staff as possible. Corporately, we have a range of systems which are used across the council. They are what they are, they work well, we're trying to interface where possible. So focusing just on housing, over the last few years, we've really prioritized and resourced IT improvements. We've got a development work plan, and we also have a housing IT governance group in which is chaired by Damien Roberts, and we have IT, the IT manager attends that as well. And we assess requests for IT through business case priority and capacity for new projects. So during 2014-15, some of you who were on the housing improvement subcommittee will remember the process improvement program, which really maximized our use of Orchard and set us with some really robust processes. We've also launched the customer dashboard for staff to get one view of the customer through Orchard, so they can see whether they made contact about a rent inquiry, and have they made a repair request, and what was to hopefully stop tenants having to tell the same thing the third time they call us. But hopefully, they won't need to call us three times, but they don't have to say the same information. We've also upgraded Orchard's system. So we, you get your housing management database system out of the box, but it continually needs to be upgraded, a bit like your Microsoft things at home that you need to upgrade. So we've had success in developing Orchard, Keystone, and a website review. And our future developments are to link Orchard to Agresso, which is our finance system, to prevent the duplication of efforts for our customer service team in managing invoices. We're also launching a digital platform towards the end of this year to allow tenants to access their rent accounts online, to check their balance. They can already make payments, but it's bringing all that information together. We've got a big project coming up with maintenance procurement, so there'll be IT developments, and potentially working with a new contractor will need to be worked out. And we also need to comply with the new data protection regulations. So there'll be quite a bit of IT work we expect to actually act as well. Within the team, I have one Orchard Systems Project Officer, and then we have support from our central IT team as well. Historically, housing haven't had their own IT focus. It's been under-resourced, and that's had an impact on certain projects. I'd say in the last two years, we've managed to resource it with our Systems Project Officer. I've had an element of my time, and there's been a real commitment from team leaders as well to get the IT working and to improve our processes through IT. So in conclusion, we have a comprehensive range of IT systems. They do help us support and deliver service. We have an IT governance group that champions the changes and helps us with developments. And we're continually looking to improve. We have the ethos that we want to increase efficiencies and improve our customer service through IT.
Okay, I mean, a lot of this was triggered by some concerns about our systems and the MIA systems coming up with strangely different dates for completion and dates for various things. Are you saying that with Orchard and MCM now busily chatting to each other, that problem has effectively been dealt with?
The information passes backwards and forwards very well. The date issue will be dependent on the person who puts the date into the database. So by the fact that information passes backwards and forwards, we will pick up if we think there's an error being made. So those checks are made, and an anomaly report is created. So yes, I am confident in the information being passed backwards and forwards. However, there is always human error sometimes with data entry.
I have a question relating to data security. Given that, you know, you seem to have made a lot of improvements, making it more user-friendly and with more interfaces, I don't sense, I have a clear sense of how secure the data is, particularly in light of GDPR coming in next May. How, what assurances can you give us that the data is secure and not vulnerable?
We have data protection, we have data sharing agreements with anybody to share information with. And our IT department are very robust with protecting our data. And I believe they're audited every year, every six months.
We're part of the public sector network, and we have to, well, I'm the officer that signs that off every year to say that we're compliant.
And with GDPR, are you worried about being compliant with that?
Chair, this is a really important issue. GDPR is a major upgrade on the standards of data governance that all organizations, particularly public sector organizations, are bound by. Comes into force next year. It gives individuals greater rights, but also has much greater penalties for organizations like us if we were to breach those data protection rules.
Or if the people that we share the data with breach it as well.
Yes, absolutely. So it's far-reaching and significant. We have a dedicated project in the council, not in housing, but the council as a whole, led by my director colleague, Graham Clark, who's taking that work forward, making sure that everything is in place by that date. One of the things I think housing have done is make sure particularly that we move away from paper records. We do not have staff going out with big bundles of paper anymore and case files. Wherever possible, it's on electronic media, on a machine like this. If the machine gets lost, we're able to remotely wipe it, so make it completely unusable for anybody who might pick it up. And there are very strict rules around what we can share with what organizations. We do share information, but it's only shared when we follow established protocols, which includes having information-sharing protocols that justifies the type of information being shared, and only with particular agencies, agencies like the police, sometimes our health colleagues, and sometimes adult and children's social care.
Thank you. Bastian?
Thank you very much indeed. Thank you very much, Annalisa. Interested to know, we've got all these different systems. It's just a question of are we all talking to each other? Because sometimes that doesn't happen. So we're having to transfer, like with Agresso. We have to transfer information from one system to another manually, as I understand it. And I want to talk about Agresso, because we have mentioned it over the last couple of years, and we are still no further forward with sorting it. Now, I would like to see, for the council as a whole, a list of IT projects that are in the hands of the IT department, and the priorities they have on counting out these projects. Because it would be interesting to see where down this list housing fits in. Now, I know every committee has its problems, but we are really interested in giving a good housing service. And I'm always delighted when we hear of improvements that have been made and satisfaction is good, et cetera. But if we are going to watch costs, and that has to come into it, we have got to work better, be smarter at what we do, and that also includes IT. And here, Agresso looks after invoices, et cetera, and links in with finance. And I just want to know what we're going to do about sorting this. Thank you, Chair.
Chairman, if I could start. So Counselor Foster is absolutely right that it's very important that the council's systems link in with the housing systems, really to avoid having to print stuff out and retype it. These things need to be integrated. The housing service is one of the, if not the largest budget within the council, largest service budget. I think it's a £30 million sort of business that housing is. And a lot of transactions, you've heard about the responsive repairs being an example. We have, I think, more customer contacts linked to our service than any other individual service in the council. So it's really important that the finances work. And it's fair to say that the progress with creating an interface between our Orchard system and our financial Agresso system has been delayed. But I'm pleased to say that things are looking much better now, and that the project integrates those two pieces of software is now well progressed. And I'm hoping that in the autumn, we'll be in a position to test it out and be very satisfied with the outcome. It's in testing now. So we're already in the autumn, so yeah, so we're testing now. And this is part of a wider upgrade of the Agresso system. It will benefit all council services. But obviously, as Counselor Foster says, we're most interested in benefit for housing. And that work, hopefully, if it were in testing now, will be made live in the next month or two, which is great news.
Chancellor Goodrich.
Well, I was looking at page 34, paragraph 16, first bullet point. I was going to ask when it's going live, so it's gone a few months away. When that happens, are we now saying that all our internal computer systems are now all talking to each other without exception? So far as housing is concerned?
No, not even that, Chairman.
So which is the next one after that?
I think this highlights a really, really important issue. And I think members have got a sense of it from what Annalisa set out. There's a lot of systems. Why are there so many systems, you probably want to ask? It's partly the nature of the IT industry. They like the idea of selling a single organization lots of different systems for every single service that we provide. And to make it so bespoke and so attractive that we have no choice but to buy into it. And we try and resist that very strongly, because what we want is fewer systems, because that's less cost, less support, less training, and it enables that integration to happen from the get-go, rather than having to invest time and money creating specific interfaces between, you know, systems designed by different software suppliers. So we have, over the last few years, started to implement system-wide IT that we're trying to make work for more and more of those services. So SharePoint, Annalisa mentioned, is a system that some of our services now rely on for their databases. What's great about SharePoint is that it's a council-wide system. It's supported by the council, and the more that we can get on to SharePoint, the more we can simplify our IT world, and the more that everything will talk to each other automatically. We have other systems like Civica, that again is really great for holding certain sorts of documents and allowing people from anywhere in the council to access it. But we are really only at the beginning of that journey. Most of our systems... Most of our systems do not interface with each other, do not, in some cases, they don't necessarily need to. But our desire is to end up in a place where, ideally, having one system, I'll probably never get there, where everything will talk to each other from the get-go.
Councillors?
We're putting as a priority after Agresso, the digital platform.
Yes.
Does that, is that right? Should we be scrutinising the priority of, I mean, okay, digital platform is helpful for tenants, because they can then have a look themselves. Is that more important than getting some of our other computer systems to talk to other, you know, other programs?
Chairman, it's a good challenge, because there's many different ways that one could approach this. One of the advantages of the digital platform is it creates an interface that isn't a housing interface, even though we're implementing it in housing, but actually is a corporate interface, where all, eventually, all the council services could use that platform. And for the customer, that would provide a single point of contact, a single way of logging in, where they can access everything. So when they're accessing housing, in theory, could access council tax, could access bin collection, or from the single interface. So really, it's compatible with that direction of travel, of having council-wide systems that all the different services can eventually plug into. It just happens to be that housing is at the front of the queue for having those services enabled, but other services will then follow suit.
Councillor Gough.
I'm assuming that's cloud-based?
Is it cloud-based? I think it is, because pretty much everything that we've got now is cloud-based, or moving to cloud-based. So I think it's very likely that it is.
Because from what you were saying earlier, then it doesn't matter so much if you have various hubs that are feeding into the one interface. So the bespoke various services can maintain that, which they are very used to and they enjoy. But at the same time, it's all secure and streamlined through the cloud. Is that correct?
It is absolutely correct. Chairman, so more services are entering the cloud, and more IT is what's described as IT as a service. So you're not buying a piece of software, you're not buying a server, you're buying a service that you access through the internet. And it's located anywhere, it could be located in the UK or it could be located further afield. And what's great about that is that it offers great resilience. So if our building went down, or if there was snow and we couldn't get in, or the power fails, because it's in the cloud, it has multiple backups, very, very secure, and you can access it from anywhere. And so we are looking at increasingly moving more and more of our services to the cloud, not only in one go, we're doing it iteratively. I think probably the next one will be moving Outlook, our email system, and our calendar system to the cloud, because of that extra resilience and flexibility. And pretty much our HR and payroll system is provided in that way as well. We don't host it here, it's hosted somewhere else, and we access it through the internet. So it's a direction of travel that the IT industry is moving in, and it offers us significant benefits as well.
Councillors, anyone?
We have a recommendation from the vice-chairman that we request from IT a prioritised list. If there are no other things we could recommend, the recommendation on the second page of your main agenda, it's recommended that we consider the information provided, which I think has been encouraging. Agree on the observations? If we agree with the vice-chair's observations, let's put that forward as a request to IT and the executive. Is that recommendation agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much, everybody. So we're on to item seven now, sheltered housing and housing-related support. As you heard earlier, Hugh has had a bereavement and is not here, so Andrew is going to stand in and lead on this one, so over to you.
Thank you, Chairman. Just first of all to note, for the reasons now, that housing-related support comes to us down a couple of channels. First of all, for socially excluded groups, that is homeless people with particular needs, usually relating to mental health. And we receive support from the county council to help with accommodating such people. And that runs also into two ways, both accommodation-based and floating support. And one thing the districts and boroughs have made clear to counties is that the accommodation-based support is very important, because where you have folk like that, with high needs, you have to be able to put them somewhere to live. The floating support, working with people to help them solve their housing crisis, is another issue. So they have got a blended approach to reducing the funding. Overall, it needs to be reduced by twenty percent. We've lobbied for a less reduction on accommodation-based support, that seems to have been agreed. We essentially use the York Road project in Woking, where we purchased two to three specialist beds for people who are from the socially excluded groups. So from that point of view, that won't affect us greatly. In terms of floating support, we've had a kind of arrangement with Guildford Borough Council, where we've worked with the Riverside Organisation. That hasn't delivered much for us. So in terms of floating support, there is the option for us to, as it were, take funding and put in some of our own homelessness grant money and appoint somebody to work specifically with those groups in terms of supporting them in their housing need. Now, this is ongoing, but this is the way we would like to take it. And so from that angle, the reduction in housing-related support won't hit us too bad. In fact, we might, with our own internal officer, get a better result. And with the Homelessness Reduction Act coming in, we're going to see more and more of this kind of thing, we're going to need to reinforce that officer presence. In terms of sheltered housing, housing-related support for older people and people with disabilities, this is a much bleaker prospect, with county recommending a reduction in overall seventy percent in funding for housing-related support. Now, twenty-seven to twenty-eighteen, we're due to have received about a hundred and seventy thousand in housing-related support grant, which goes to fund our sheltered housing schemes and the offices that run those. What we have to do, and it's very likely, when the Surrey County Council Cabinet meets next week, these proposals will go through, there has been a consultation. And I think probably at this point, it's quite useful for the tenants' panel to speak. We did plan that they would come in after I spoke about the socially excluded groups, but I'm such a blabbermouth, so I do apologise, Chairman. I think if the tenants' panel is all right with you, Chair, would like to speak now, we will, I'll hang my head in shame and you guys continue.
Thank you, Andrew. Let's be a joint venture, Chair, so I'll start. Obviously, there's eight sheltered housing units, and we consulted, went to all eight units to the consultations, and we made a report, which is actually here, if anyone, it should have been in the agenda bit, in the documents, if anybody would like to have a quick look. Basically, we've made a report on all the views of the tenants. It ranges from their needs of duty of care, the manager's role, tenants' reasons for coming to sheltered housing, isolation tenants fulfill, the alarm of it all, well, the tentacle alarm system they were worried about. Relatives have lots of numerous concerns. In fact, and other services, like ambulance service and things like that, if the managers happen to go, how will ambulance services get into sheltered housing for the vulnerable? And as Andrew mentioned, on the twenty-sixth of September, which is next week, coming in the day, myself and Brenda were going to the consultation at Kingston to put a question across to the cabinet, to question whether it's sort of value for money to take the managers away. To the knock-on effect, some of the tenants will have to go to care homes, which obviously are very expensive. I think we're searching about a thousand pounds a week, some of them are. So the question is, is it cost-effective to sort of take the manager away and leave the tenants in, you know, without a manager? And some of them have to go, so that's the line we're going to take. Brenda wrote a letter, would you like to explain about the letter?
Yeah, sorry you didn't get these, we should have put them around to you ahead of this meeting, but there's been so much going on. But this was the report that we came up with, and we have sent this to Surrey County Council. And at the bottom, you'll see there, it says, Dear Sir or Madam, that's the covering letter that went via email that I sent with our recommendations. We do feel very strongly about this, and we, you know, we're doing all we can. So as I say, we are going to be there. We were allowed one question, and as Adrian's already explained, we've asked them a question about the comparison, if they have to go into a care home, it's going to cost a lot more. And they said that we can ask a supplementary question in response to that, but obviously we don't at this point know the answer to that question, because we'll get up to it next week. But so this is what has gone to them. This was a summary of all that we had, I mean, we had thirteen, no, seventeen pages of notes from the different consultations at the eight sheltered housing units. So we just brought it all together to bring out the relevant points, and I think if you read it through, you'll find there's some pretty important things that if they remove that funding, it's really going to have an impact on those, particularly elderly people who are vulnerable and do need that service. So that's where we are as a panel, and we are going to be there at the meeting. We're not actually allowed to say anything at the meeting, but our presence will be there. And we have said this, so they do know how we feel.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Chair. Thank you very much for this. I'll read it later, because I've given it quickly, and it seems to me to be, you know, a valuable piece of work, which hopefully will, you never know, might sway some minds.
Supporting managers and tenants.
Councillor Coburn wishes to speak.
Well, I just think it's excellent, and I think, you know, you've raised some really good points here, because I think one thing that, you know, people who don't deal all the time with vulnerable people and elderly people, don't understand just the worry that is so much part of their lives, the worrying about falling, the worry about all sorts of things. And, you know, it becomes much more important to them, or has a greater effect on their lives than actually some of the physical things. And I think, you know, to take away the sort of prop, if you like, you're absolutely right, people are going to have to flood themselves in, you know, we've been in this situation with our own mother and mother-in-law. You know, they get to the point where, you know, they need the help, or they have to go into residential care, there is just no alternative, and then you're into a totally different, very expensive system. So I hope they listen, because it's really good, very well put out, and it's excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, may I ask, Brenda, through you. I know, I don't suppose you know how many people, say, are affected at the moment in numbers you gave us, eight groups, if I, roughly, with your experience in that, how is this growing at the moment, these numbers? Because I would have thought this was actually, sadly, an area that is getting worse and worse. And so the Surrey County Council are really looking at it as of now, but in two or three years, it's going to be really desperate.
Yeah, in the question that we did send across, that was one of the things I brought out, is with councillor King's help, add a little bit on, that it is a growing population, these elderly people. We are living longer, and there are going to be more and more needs, so this is going to get worse, and there are fewer and fewer care homes available for these people to go to. So the problem is going to arise, not only it's going to cost a lot more to house them, but also where are you going to put them? Because there are not the available places for them, there's already waiting lists. So yes, we did put that across, it is a growing situation.
Well, thank you for your work, anyway.
Councillor Ellis, because you haven't spoken, and then I'll move on to the other two who have spoken already.
Mine is a comment, Chairman, if I may. The first time I heard from a tenant about this particular issue was back in July, the early part of July. Yes. And I think that cranny people are fairly militant at the moment. But having continued to hear from these residents who are very concerned about this particular prospect, they are very grateful to our tenants' panel, and also to councillor King for her support in this. So just wanted to say thank you to you, because the tenants are being, I mean, to say, we're being looked after.
Thank you, councillor Ellis, I appreciate, thank you.
Councillor Goodrich, and then councillor Eadly Gough.
Can I ask, as the chairman, well firstly, to congratulate the panel on this report, Chair, but later in detail, could we have clarification as to what our obligations are for these group of people compared to the Surrey County Council's obligations? Because we're always looking at Borough Council's discretionary and so on, and there must be some demarcation somewhere, because where the obligation runs is where the money should come from. And I'm just wanting to clarify where the demarcation is between the borough and the county for dealing with these vulnerable, very important people.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman, I think.
No, please, no, no.
If you're going to fight, you're going to have to.
I think because that support will cease, then individuals will be able to apply for support from the county, and those that are most vulnerable ought to achieve that, about thirty percent of them. In terms of ourselves and our own sheltered housing tenants, we can't provide housing-related support from the rents. So if we were going to do that, we would need to find a budget to do that. What we're going to have to do is work out a project plan on how we're going to take this forward, and how we are going to model sheltered housing in the future with regard to our elderly tenants. And also, we're going to have to consult with the sheltered housing managers, see what their view is, and the subsequent likelihood of redundancies. Now, when we think of the grant we've received this year as a hundred and seventy-six thousand or so, it is an increasing problem. I ought to say that all of the district and boroughs have, to a larger or lesser extent, done what our tenants' panel have so valiantly done, and nationally, there is a huge wave asking the government to produce their green paper on housing-related support. Now, we are waiting for a number of things from government, and one of those key things is this: what are you going to do about this? Where is the money going to come from? Because this is a growing and increasing issue. So we've got to sit down and work out how we're going to model sheltered housing, and if and how we are going to help our sheltered housing, our tenants, continue to receive the support that they already have gaps.
You've done that very well. Impressive, I didn't even need to shut them up. There is a danger, I think, based on what you've heard, that there is, of our residents falling between two stools. We provide housing, and we've tried our best to provide housing that meets the needs of our local community, but you're absolutely right, that we have a growing older population, we have the fastest-growing over eighty-five population in Surrey. We're also very rural, so social isolation is a major factor for many of our residents. And if people are not confident living in their own home, then often what follows is mental health issues and then physical issues that do result in people prematurely entering into residential care or nursing care at huge costs, and so absolutely the cost that you were identifying. Now, as a council, with our health and wellbeing strategy, we want to make sure that we're preventing people from going into residential care and enabling people to live as long as possible in their own homes. Within housing, we're constrained by the rules around what we can spend tenant's money on. We've certainly built the sheltered accommodation, and we are engaging with Surrey about their desire to find some provision that sits between mainstream housing and residential care. And we think sheltered housing is a perfect model, and our residents who live there, those of you who've spoken, say the same thing, they love them, they love the staff, and they love the support, and it does represent really good value for money. I think what we haven't succeeded at is been able to get that across fully to Surrey. And there is a real danger, I think, that they will be developing new provision which sits between that divide, when we already have good examples that already are already delivering. And once we lose those staff with their experience and skills, it's very hard to bring those skills back in. So, you know, we're very disappointed, but aren't necessarily holding up a lot of hope around what decisions finally Surrey do take, given their significant financial challenges. Another question. Thank you, Chair, thank you. If the money can't be found, for whatever reasons, will there be general needs properties there? Well, Chairman, we have to wait until the decision's been taken. Clearly, as a portfolio holder... Clearly, as a, as a portfolio holder and in the housing service, I think there's a collective will in the tenants panel to do whatever we can within the rules to provide some sort of sheltered accommodation. It will not look like what we have today, but it will be the best that we can possibly achieve with the resources and within the rules that we have.
Councillor Gal.
Well, a lot has already been said, but I just wanted to say that this paper has been very well thought through. And it does outline a point that Damon raised about, um, the pressures that Surrey is under. And I just wondered whether or not you have involved R and P, um, in terms of some of these findings because that's where the disconnect really is. I mean, the social workers at Surrey, they, they know what's on the ground, they, they live it. But we, we had Surrey, when I was still at Surrey, campaigned very, very hard on this whole agenda. And then we had a car crash of a campaign in, in terms of the social reform that would, but they never talked to anyone about it before they'd launched that manifesto. And if they had just taken the time to speak to people at Surrey and at the boroughs districts, maybe it would have been better informed. But, you know, when you're faced with having to save in your a hundred and fifty million on a net budget of six hundred million, when you've already cut four hundred and fifty million, uh, one becomes stuck between a rock and a hard place and something has to give. The adult social care budget is the biggest budget. It's two thirds of the net revenue budget, approaching four hundred and fifty million pounds a year. Um, and, you know, that leaves only a few hundred million for everything else, including roads and children's services and everything else. So it's, it's a really difficult situation, which in my view, the MPs have not really, well, it wasn't even in the Autumn Statement last year. The Chancellor didn't have any mention of social care. And, uh, it is probably the most pressing issue in, in our country. And we've seen even in Farnham and where we, where I live, you know, the food bank going up four hundred percent in the space of eighteen months, that sort of thing. It's very real, but we don't have that engagement. And I think it would be very helpful if you would copy in our MP on that. And then everyone puts pressure on, on the central government to listen to us at a, at a local level on this issue.
Question?
Thank you. Really, it's following on from what Denise has said. Um, I don't think there is an appreciation of exactly what problems are. We already have reduced sheltered housing staffing.
Yeah.
And this is the next line. And it was interesting reading your excellent report. And that is, I think, one of the things we should try and do like now is to reassure tenants that the care line service will continue. Because in here, they are concerned about the care line service. And I think we ought to be able to give them that reassurance because I for one would be against care line coming out. Um, we need to and we can reassure them because that's what they think. And what's happening at the moment is they know they're going to reduce the staffing, therefore they're all concerned. And when they're concerned, they look at things that we're not going to do, but they think we are. So we need to give them some kind of reassurance. In Surrey, practically everyone of our MPs is on the cabinet, near the cabinet or whatever. And I think we should, the leader of Waverley Borough Council, I would like this as a recommendation, should actually write to every one of the Surrey MPs expressing our views very forcibly, um, to try and get something, and that also includes the Prime Minister. Because unless we start to have a high profile on this one, nothing will happen. Surrey's got its own problems, but our problems and our concerns must be with our tenants.
And Bernard, the leader did do that, uh, in.
No, 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 but, um, talk about this council.
No, the, our leader now wrote in advance of the, um, after the Autumn Statement.
Julia Potts?
Yes, to all the leader, to all the MPs on this very subject. And had a very short.
Sorry, we don't know that.
Had a very, you know, yeah, all, all districts and boroughs did that as all the country crews then. And nobody listened.
Well, let's do it again.
Yeah, I agree, let's do it again. You've got to keep nagging.
Thank you, chairman.
Any other points, councillors? Can we, councillor, sorry, councillor Goodrich?
Yeah, can, can we, um, I mean, I, I assume the borough council has written in strong terms, the Surrey County council explaining, as Damon pointed out, you know, just now, the, the, the situation. I just think a copy of Waverley's letter to Surrey and the tenants panel's paper here should go to the MPs.
Yeah. And together with, you know, the narrative that goes with it.
Because I think, you know, I think, and the Prime Minister. I mean, this should go widely to anybody who writes it.
I was, during the consultations, it was duly noted by all the tenants, no MPs or councillors or any, apart from Carol, of course, nobody else went. It was duly noted by everybody. So I don't know, I'm assuming the councillors didn't know, or that's what I was thinking.
Went to where?
To the consultations, to actually, to, um.
In the sheltered housing?
Yes, in the sheltered housing, yes.
Didn't know about that.
No, so, I mean, it was duly noted, wasn't it, Carol? That, um, the tenants were just saying, where's the MPs, where's, where's the people to support? And we couldn't obviously reply because we didn't know what, you know.
They were particularly concerned that no Surrey County council councillors had been there and it was them that organised consultations, but none of their councillors attended.
I'm not councillor anymore.
No, I'm only, I'm not people talking to people than anyone around this table. But it was pointed out that no Surrey County council councillors were there, which was probably pretty poor. Since it's such an important city office. It was noted by Surrey offices, yes.
Right, so are we content that we should recommend to the executive that a letter in, in this vein should go to, there's many MPs. Someone said that those might, that might listen, I think they should go to those that might not listen as well.
And the Prime Minister.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And the Chancellor.
Yeah.
But also a note, I'm just, um, the tenants panel has actually gone to the Hazen Herald and the Surrey advertiser with it as well. Just to sort of add a note to that really, just to put it out to the wider audience. Just as, thank you.
Good, thank you.
You're talking about MPs in Surrey, are you?
I'm talking about the Surrey MPs, but we're, we're, we'll have the Chancellor and the, uh, and the Prime Minister in.
Is the Chancellor of Surrey there?
Councillors as well, isn't he?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Uh, and maybe such as Javid, uh, DCLG. That would be one to include.
Good idea.
But if we can.
Say one for us, then we'll get some response.
Um, chairman, could we give reassurances by way of a recommendation about care line?
A letter, you mean?
No, I'm putting the recommendation to the executive.
Because how's that going to get to the tenants, the, um, the, um, reassurance? Are they going to get some, some?
I don't know.
If we put it in the recommendation.
Andations for officers.
Okay, okay, okay.
It was, um, it was brought up in the consultations and they were reassured by the officers at present that, but that wasn't going to be taken away from them.
Okay, well, let's, let's add it to the recommendation from here.
That's true.
Are we content with that? Because you're the guy drafting it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, anything else on this topic? Andrew then, I think you're on again to complete part two, are you?
Well, no, I think we've covered it, chairman, to be honest. The only, the only thing I would say is that the Surrey Chief Housing Officers meeting last week, when Catherine Piper and you've got her note there as part of your papers, um, the likelihood of it actually, anything that we do and say altering the resolution next Tuesday is about as likely as, you know, me flying to the moon. So I think actually lobbying the MP.
There's a chance then.
I suppose so, yes. Lobbying the MPs, chairman, would be the best way. And particularly if we can get that green paper because it's a national issue.
Yeah. Okay, um, on to item eight then, Oxford Ridge, that is its feedback, which will probably feed into item nine in some kind of serious way. Um, I think we had an excellent visit to Oxford Ridge and thank everybody for organising it and everybody that came on it. It was very, very, very interesting to see how it was going. Was hugely instructive for me and probably hopefully some other people as well. I, I'll happily invite anyone else who, who was on the site visit to, to come up with, with comments and things that they noticed. Um, but why, why I said it's going to possibly lead into item nine is, um, the two show houses I thought looked excellent. And I thought that was a really great project to have built those houses and let people see what sort of thing was going to come. Because I'm, I'm sure there was a lot of fear and concern around the area about, you know, what is going to come? You know, we're going to knock down my house, what is going to come in its, in its place? And, and they look really, they look fantastic, I think. And obviously I think they've had the desired effect, that they've calmed some of the fears and they've got people interested in them. Uh, a thing that, that I personally noticed when I was at the front, I thought, that's great, fantastic. When I moved around to the side, there seemed to be a huge area above the first floor windows going up into the roof space. Uh, and I asked the question, what's in there? And the answer I got was, well, we don't let the tenants go in there, it's all boarded off. And, and I said, hang on a minute, surely we could actually put some bedrooms up there and get more beds on the same plot of land? And so this, this sort of triggered off a discussion on basically, should we be relooking at the form of housing that we're building? Um, and chatting to the officers, there is time to relook at our design before Area C, uh, goes forward for planning. So since we didn't really have any strong views on what we should do as an end of that study, um, I put this forward as, as an idea when we were meeting after the site visit. Um, and it seemed at the time to get a lot of support that, um, we should look at, you know, instead of boarding off the attic, should we have a couple of bedrooms up there? Um, and various other things that, that, so it, it got a little broader into looking at the design for basically Area C before, um, it goes to planning. So, which is, is why I say it moves on into item nine. So my suggestion, which was, I think broadly, uh, appreciated at the time, was that that should be the first in-depth study that we were to do. So for all our councillors who were on the site visit or anybody else is yours, councillor Coven.
Yes, I mean, I think we almost found it hard to find a, an area to scrutinise because having been on the site visit and seen what was going on and the excellent liaison work and all the other parts of the, the whole story that we came away, well, we came into, it was very hot, wasn't it? I seem to recall, and we eventually sat down in that classroom, my feet were killing there, I don't remember that. Um, and, and basically, you know, we found it very hard to think of anything to say other than wow, you know, what a wonderful way to run a project. So it was very difficult to find something to do in depth when you've already got something that, that seems to be working. Because, you know, very often, obviously, what we're supposed to be doing is scrutinising something that isn't working terribly well. So I think, um, the, the chairman's suggestion was about the only thing we came up with, I seem to recall. And certainly anything we can do to help with design, just small points and, and, you know, as the project goes forward. I'm sure we've all got, um, experience of certain aspects of this that might be useful.
Vice-chairman.
I, I wasn't able to go on the site's visits, I do know the site. Um, and certainly, you know, I am keen that we do scrutiny on it. And the reason is that you have observed on a design standard. And we do have a design standard for our buildings and what we expect. And that is based on the government standard. And we can't go lower than the government standard, but we may decide there's a Waverley standard which is higher. So I think it gives us an opportunity to look at our design standard of anything we build. Uh, and so, and I'm very keen that we monitor the finances. You know, this is a very expensive project and as Damon knows, I'm always going on about the cost of it. Um, and if it goes up, I want to know why. Uh, I want to know how we monitor deviations from the plan because that is generally a cost. So I think that we have quite a lot that we can look at in general terms. Because once we agree, we look at our design standard, that is the design standard for any other plot that we build on, subject to the plot suitability. So I, I do think we do have something and it's not just to say, oh, this is great, isn't it, it works. Remember that on this project, communication with the tenants did not work. And there were lots of complaints about it. Uh, the tenants were very unhappy, but we managed to pull it right, which is good news. So what we need to do is, in my view, I'd like to see us look at it overall and see if there's something we need to do. Or we can say, big tick, we've done it well, this is the project plan for anything else we do. Thank you, John.
Yeah, just, just before I call you, Damon, it, it wasn't just the standard, but the style that I thought we should look at. Because there's probably a beautiful standard in those houses, but the style could have changed and perhaps got more, more people into, into an area still in a nice house. Councillor Goodrich.
Unfortunately, I was away when you went, but I know the site extreme and a lot of people, because it's part of my parish. So, um, and we have a PCC up there tomorrow. Now, it was the comment you made, and I wanted you to treat what I'm going to say very carefully. The government minimum standards actually may let us down. And I just mentioned Brentford on this. We don't know, there is an inquiry and this is all being examined at the moment. So, um, if we do decide to go for the minimum standards, uh, I, I would actually say please think again. Because, uh, trying to be forward and go for better than that is often very much safer. Better materials and in the long term is actually cheaper.
I don't think, certainly from my point of view, there was any intention of basic government standards. And I think the vice-chairman is saying much the same, that we're going to have our own standards, which by force of law will be above the government standards because they can't be below them.
No.
Um, but it, it, it was, it was an opportunity to look at something because it's our biggest expenditure. It has the biggest impact on people.
Yes.
Uh, which are the two big things that I think scrutiny should be looking at. Um, and it should also have the ability to change our future actions, which with Project C coming up, it has a, a time constraint where it could fit with that and could be really useful all round. But no, let me assure everybody, there's, there's no intention of going for minimum basic standards, which is why I said we're looking at style as well, which, but, uh, as, as the vice chair added, this is a good time to look at our standard, look at our style. And this seems to be timely for our first thing. And then there's financial liaison with tenants, there's all sorts of things that we can look at. Um, you know, have we delivered it speedily and on time? We can look at, but that's more the end of the first project where we can see, you know, what we're fit for. So I think on Oxford Ridge, there, there's a world of things we can look at, which will be useful scrutinies and will help us in the future. Uh, this just happened to be the one I thought we should do first because it fits in, we're doing it before we put in planning for Area C.
And, and chairman, just, just to reinforce that point, this was one of the first things that we did as a council when we first embarked on the housing delivery programme. We did it at a time when we had more resources. We did it at a time when we hadn't actually built anything yet and we hadn't got the real life experience of what tenants, of tenants' feedback and our experience of actually making those things happen. And so it is really timely now, given the progress we've made, to, to look at those design standards again and see how they can be improved.
Any more comments, councillors? So can we take it forward that the first in-depth study will be design, standard and style? Um, and that Oxford Ridge is likely to spawn a number of other in-depth studies in the future? But this is the first one to do for, for that particular thing. Are we content with that?
Very good.
Thank you very much, everybody. Okay, well, I think that ticks off eight and nine unless, uh, Louis. Uh, membership of the task group. Louisa is dying to say something and I'm stealing your thunder. My apologies.
I think, I think, thank you, yeah, I think you've covered a lot of the ground which was outlined in the report. Um, I'd just, uh, like to draw your attention to the items on page forty-two, which is the principles of, of what our original design guidelines and standards set out together with what the design standards include in, in the guidance. So that it gives some context as to where the, the starting point. The other element to point out is the fact that the government do have a national set of standards. Some of them we exceed already, so that would be something we can look at. Um, and also, since we adopted these standards in April two thousand and fourteen, um, the government have, um, made changes to their legislation in respect of sustainability. So they've moved the code for sustainable homes and embedded those energy targets within the building regulations. So there's a number of elements that, that could be brought into, into this review. Um, so basically, the other thing to add is that we've, we've also delivered some properties to these standards. There will be some back. There will be some background of and and pictures that we can share with you and and drawings that will demonstrate layouts for those properties that you, that the working group can view. So, yes, so just to to follow the recommendation was to 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 review these these guidelines and and to look at them in the context of Site C for Oxford Ridge.
And we would we would obviously like some keen volunteer councillors to be on this small subgroup. Not more than five, so you don't all need to join. And we would also like a representative for the tenants' panel, if you would be keen. Okay? That's one. Do we have any more councillors? One councillor?
As I know it, two.
Two councillor? Three councillor?
That's enough.
Four, that'll do.
I'm from Cranly, so Cranly as well.
Oh, we want we want a rebel.
No, we won't.
I don't think it matters where you come from. I think we are looking at a standard. Well, we've got four councillors and one from the tenants' panel. I think that should be sufficient. Yeah?
So Alex, we'll do a scurrying report.
Yeah.
Can I just also pick up on your further points about Oxford Ridge and areas to look at? Councillor Seeburn, I believe, at the last meeting requested a schedule of programme and costs against against each element of the project. So just to flag that, I will be bringing that and I can bring a regular update for that particular issue.
Good.
Okay. Thank you very much. So we're content with that item, we can move on to committee committee work programme. I'm sure you all have read it assiduously. I don't intend to go through it line by line by line. But basically, councillors, are there any comments that you are burning to make on the work programme, good, bad or indifferent? Anything you want to add? Anything you want to subtract?
Jim, so then you have to summarise the the items we were looking at for the November meeting are Homelessness Reduction Act, Housing Strategy, the Oxford Ridge Development Programme summary, private sector housing, an introductory presentation and the revised home improvement policy, and an update on the commission of the housing-related support and the the impact that will have in Waverley specifically, both in terms of the and the side, which is the socially included.
Yes, the socially included groups.
Socially included groups and also the sheltered housing.
And just to pick up a a title on page seventy-eight, it wasn't the tenants' panel that did the voice report, it was the scrutiny group. Whilst we're all deeply thinking about this, the Value for Money Group, I think, are doing a study which they would welcome a member of this group to join. And since you weren't there, Councillor Seeburn, we all thought you would make an excellent representative.
Well, you were at the meeting.
So you showed keenness.
It's actually me who proposed this.
We would like to give you an official jacket to wear at the meeting, if you would be trying to accept the nomination.
Right, yes.
Thank you very much. Coerced is the word.
There's a lot of money to be saved, but.
Yeah.
Does the rest of the committee know what it is?
Not really, no.
No.
Yeah, so the Value for Money and Customer Service scrutiny committee are looking at a review into the capital programme, mainly on slippages. So looking at reasons why there's been slippage in the capital programme and kind of monitoring the programme going back a couple of years to try and make recommendations to prevent any unwanted slippage going ahead in the future. And on, a week ago when they when they met, they wanted to have a member from housing to cover the HRA aspect, of which Richard Seeborn's kindly volunteered to take that post up. But if any other members wanted to have input, then you're more than welcome.
There is a lot of slippage, Jim.
Can I just say, Alex, although that was a little bit jargon-esque, and is it possible to perhaps, I don't know, put it more in plain and stones at all?
Sure.
Because capital programmes might mean nothing to some people.
So a a a large part of our money pays for day-to-day service delivery that we do. But also a large proportion of our budget pays for capital schemes, and capital schemes are normally associated with buildings. So it might be an extension, it may be a major refurbishment, or it may be a new build, or buying a property. And I think what this highlights for housing is that in the past, when we said we would spend ten million pounds in a year, we only maybe spent seven. And it's understanding why that is. And there are lots of potential reasons. We explored it in the meeting. It might be because we were too ambitious in the first place. It might be because we didn't profile the spend beyond that year. So a project seldom falls within one year, particularly large building projects like Oxford Ridge. And maybe we didn't schedule it over the subsequent years accurately enough. Or maybe we, those projects encountered problems that were unanticipated that caused delays. And in a way, it's looking for what the themes are and identifying what we could do collectively and the rest of the council could do to make sure those schemes involving big spending on projects come in on budget. Because the danger when you don't spend the money is it just sits in a bank account not being productive, when it actually could be invested for another two years and generate a bit more of a return than simply staying in the bank account.
Chairman, the example is in housing, we got behind on installing new kitchens. So we had slippage on that, despite what we kept saying, when is it going to happen? And we slipped the money and we didn't do the kitchens.
Please.
Chairman, can I just invite the members here that haven't already been, several have been to the session. So we're doing the budget briefing for members on the third of October at six thirty. So if you're not signed up, please do come along. We will, I'm just picking up on the comment from councillor Townsend about the capital, the understanding of the jargon, etc. We 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 do a very straightforward budget session about our finances, so please come along.
Got to the wings of balance.
Yeah, we sent us, yeah, we did get.
We've all had a.
Standards.
No, no, budget briefings or a number of different alternatives.
Okay.
Chairman, if I may just follow up on that, I attended the session this afternoon. It was extremely useful and very clear. I had no idea long enough. We were basically actually down to the room with a minute to go and with lots of.
Talking of ushering you out of the room. Committee work programme, do I take it that the recommendation is that the committee is content with the current work programme? With an add-on that we are nominating councillor Seeburn to be part of the joint group on sliding and slippage.
We could say councillor Seeburn volunteered.
Well, minutes don't have to do that accurately. Okay, councillors, anything else? Thank you very much for coming then. It's twenty past eight or something, so we have a lot to do.